Good evening. Welcome to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session of April 27, 2023. I call this meeting to order, and we will begin with an invocation from Pastor Andrew Dickinson, who is the Associate Pastor of the First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman LaShawn Burdany.
Please join me in prayer as you are able. Eternal God, the refuge of all your children, we thank you for the gift of this day and for life and health and strength to give of ourselves in service of our neighbors. We ask that where we need strength, you would grant us strength; that where our vision is obstructed, you would help us to see clearly; for any burdens we may carry, that you would help us carry them and bring us comfort and peace; and for those times where we feel insufficient and fear we have fallen short, we ask that your grace would compensate and abound. As we approach the work before us this evening, we pray that our city council and all who gather in this room, that you would help and guide these proceedings for the well-being of our whole community. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burdany. Thank you, Pastor Dickinson. We appreciate that. I'd like to welcome, as I said at the beginning, and welcome everybody to the City of Douglasville's Legislative Work Session. I am Douglasville's Mayor, Pro Tem, Terry Miller. And, Council... Before we begin, we will go through some protocols for the evening, and I will just jump right into that. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, and no official action will be taken tonight. The official action will be taken on all items discussed tonight on Monday, May 1st, which will be Monday at 6:00. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item comments from Citizens and Delegates section to discuss your business. Additional protocol items that you need to be aware of before we start, please listen closely so that there's no misunderstandings about how tonight's meeting will be conducted. Please keep your comments and presentation on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important to this governing body to make its decision. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in the request that you leave the chamber and the premises for the evening. Only one person will be talking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, carry on a conversation with others in the audience, or disrupt the order of this meeting in any way. We will be reminded that we are only required to accept public comment during required public hearings. We are not required to accept public comment on other items before this council. We accept public comment on all items because we feel it enables us to make better decisions, but we will maintain order. As the Chair of this meeting at any time during the meeting, I am prepared to stop the public comment for any agenda item if I believe the general good of the meeting will not benefit from actions being taken by a member or members of the audience. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, please power them off or put them in the silent mode. Thank you very much. Agenda items will be handled as follows. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then the person representing the agenda item or the applicant will make his or her presentation first, and that will be the only opportunity for you to present the information. The mayor, members of council, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council will possibly ask questions of the applicant or seek additional information. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum time limit of 20 minutes for those who speak in favor of or in opposition to the agenda item. The applicant's presentation is included in this time allotment. Each individual speaker will be limited to five minutes. Make sure you please, if you were here to speak, fill out one of the speaker's signing cards that you will find on the table outside of the auditorium. Prior to approaching the podium, please give your card to the city clerk to my right, your left, after you've completed the form or online, either in person or online. At the podium, state your name and address for the record, state whether you are in favor or against the item, then proceed with your comments. Minors, do not give your home address, please. Each person has one opportunity to comment on each agenda item. No reappearance if you think of something later or you have got to say it initially. I know that happens to all of us. This meeting is not a question-and-answer format. It's not a debate format. It's a format that gives you an opportunity to make a public comment on the respective agenda item. Please address your comments to the Chair, not to members of the audience, or to the applicant, or to the city staff, or anyone you see who's not there. If your information is repetitive or information presented earlier in the meeting or any other meetings on this matter, please, there's no need to present the same information again. If your information is repetitive, I will remind you, then request that you move on to the next, to new information that you're prepared to present. Our policy requires that printed information used for review be submitted in advance to the city's clerk office to be included in each council member's work packet. Therefore, please do not pass out or distribute additional information to the council. This also includes the citizen comment, period. My agenda asks if there are any questions. Nobody ever asks questions, so I will move on. I think the rules are pretty basic. You probably learned in kindergarten, so you should know how to proceed. So we will move right into tonight's agenda, and the first item is announcements, presentations, and we have a proclamation to give tonight, and that is from the Office of the Mayor, Rochelle Robinson, and is a proclamation in honor of the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week of April 30 through May 6, 2023. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest amount... is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Terry Miller, in the name of our mayor, Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and citizens of this city, do recognize the week of April 30 through May 6, 2023, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Ms. Vicki Acker, our city clerk, and Candace James, our Assistant City Clerk, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. So proclaimed this day, 27th of April, 2023. Ms. Vicki? Ms. Vicki and Ms. Candace, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
First of all, I'd like to say to Mayor Pro Tem, Miller, and the elected officials, we truly appreciate serving you guys every day, and we thank you for recognizing us.
I share the same sentiments, and I really want to thank you all for being able to work here at a city where you all, through your leadership, are allowing us to have the resources and education to be able to serve. And I want to thank Ms. Vicki for always being such a great city clerk. I learn a lot from her every day.
Well, thank you. You guys are the essential machinery that makes our city function. If it wasn't for you, it would all fall apart, come off the wheels, and it'd be disastrous. But you guys do a fantastic job. We truly appreciate it. Does anyone else on council would like to say a few... Councilman Adams, you look like you're about to... Or Councilman Watts?
Just ladies, as has already been said, thank you for all that y'all do in keeping me straight, because that's almost a full-time job, so appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to say a word? Councilman Esses?
I'll just reiterate what Coach said. I mean, you two are wonderful, and you do keep us up to date on all of our filings and everything, so we really, really appreciate it. And you are somehow always able to get us registered for meetings and such when nobody else is able to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have a comment. I echo my colleagues. I just want to say thank you for your kindness, your professionalism, and your compassion that you have. Thank you. Job well done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burdany. Anyone else? I will come around for pictures. I will, before we do that, I would like to sincerely apologize for my attire and my... I came, I got off a plane this afternoon, came straight to my office, had to get something done, and then came here, so I wasn't able to get home and change, and I looked like a bum, so I apologize for... But anyway, we'll come around and get a picture. Thanks.
Here, Terry. Come, come stand back here. I'll stay in front. How are you doing?
Sincerely. Yes. Thank you. You're cool.
Nope, I can see everyone. On the count of three. One, two, three. Councilman Davis, can you move that perfect? One, on the count of three. One, two, three. And one more on the count of three. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Madam Assistant Clerk. As has said before, greatly appreciated. We will now move into the rest of the agenda, and our various committee meetings. In our first committee meeting, I'm sorry, our first committee to address is the Economic Development Committee. That is chaired by our Vice Chair tonight, Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business this evening for economic development.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Our next committee is the Finance Committee, and that is chaired by Councilman Mark Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We have three items tonight. Item A, adopt a resolution to amend the Douglasville Public Purpose Corporation lease/purchase agreement by adjusting the interest rate on the lease payments to a fixed rate. Ms. Karen Callen and Carlos Encinas are going to help us with that. We discussed that in our 5:00 committee meeting, and I was ready to put it on the consent agenda in a committee meeting. I don't know where I am today, but Ms. Callen, reiterate what we had spoke of, and let's go forward. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item deals with the loan for the Public Services Building on Durley Lane. We initiated the loan in 2005, and we had the loan through the Bank of America. There are three tenants, Department of Corrections, Part and Paroles, and the Department of Family and Children's Services. The tenants make lease payments to the city, and the city pays the debt service, and the lease payments cover 100% of the debt service. This loan matures in 2026, so we only have about three years left. This loan was set up using a rate called LIBOR, and we are going to change that and amend the contract to use an index called SOFR, which is the secured overnight financing rate. And I have Carlos Encinas here with Austin and Bird. They were the bond attorneys on this project in 2005.
Thank you, Ms. Callen. So basically, the LIBOR rate is going away, so we have to make a change. We have to do something different. Okay? Come on up, Mr. Encinas, and there may be some questions. I don't know. We discussed this in our 5:00 meeting. I believe some of our council, including me, would probably like to see it on a chalkboard with crayons, as far as very simplified, because it is somewhat confusing. How are you, sir?
Doing well. Thank you very much.
Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Carlos Encinas. I'm with the law firm, Austin and Bird. I've been working with the city's finance department on these amendments, and so I don't really have that much to add beyond what Karen has provided on a very basic level, you know. So I guess I'll just give you my short synopsis of this amendment, and then you can let me know if you have any questions. So as you know, the city in 2005 entered into a variable-rate loan agreement with B of A to finance the construction of the Public Services Building on Durley Lane. And along with that loan, the city entered into a swap also with B of A, so that it only pays B of A a rate, a fixed rate of 4.11%. And under the interest rate swap, the bank pays the variable rate that is required by the loan. Both the variable, both the loan and the swap are based on LIBOR, as Karen mentioned, and as you all have, as we just discussed, LIBOR is going to cease to exist or become non-representative starting after June 30 of this year. As such, the proposed amendments will change the financial index that the city's loan and swap are based on from LIBOR to SOFR. SOFR has been recommended to replace LIBOR by a federal committee set up to analyze LIBOR transition issues and make recommendations. So that's the technical explanation, more or less. It actually is much more technical than that, but I think that that should, that's sufficient unless anyone has more specific questions. Practically speaking, though, after these amendments, the city will continue to make fixed payments under the interest rate swap of 4.11%. So not much is changing. However, for one month in July, there will be a mismatch between the loan and the swap, and that's because the, while the, both the loan and the swap will convert to SOFR starting on July 1st, the swap, the swaps rate is calculated two days before the end of each month. So for July, the rate will be calculated June 28th, and so it will be based on LIBOR, not SOFR, whereas the loan will be based on LIBOR. The city swap advisor estimates that this mismatch will require the city to make an additional payment beyond its normal fixed payment of approximately no more than $100 to $200. After July, there will be no mismatch, and the city swap advisor expects that the city will only be making its normal fixed payments under the swap of, at the rate of 4.11%.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Are there questions? I know that Ms. Callen has covered this in our 5:00 meeting. We wanted to give opportunity to see if there were questions of Mr. Encinas.
Mr.?
Yes, go ahead.
I think during the 5:00, you asked, or somebody asked, but just again, in this meeting, what is the balance on that loan?
It's around $2.4 million, but I know we've got three years left.
And it's six payments a year?
It's 12 a year.
12 a year. 12 payments a year.
Monthly payments.
Right. Monthly payments at a fixed 4.11. Okay. Thank you. That cleared it out.
Any other question or comment? Okay. Seeing none, then I would like to ask that we place this on the consent agenda, this being an item that we are, we are required to make a change in, and it looks as though our staff and Mr. Encinas has done a great job in getting us prepared for that. So thank you very much for that, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to Item B. Authorize the mayor to sign Change Order 1 with Riley Contracting Incorporated for the West Pines Maintenance Facility for the addition of slab foundation ramps for the garage doors, the addition of a ventilation fan, and supporting structures and structural remediation. Mr. Marcus Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, city engineer, 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. So most of the change order amount reflects unforeseen conditions discovered by our contractor, Riley Contracting Services, after the structure's demolition. Within the building's footprint were buried CMU walls in a hole at the northern edge of the building footprint from the possibility of a well. So staff met with Contour Engineering to basically get more of geotechnical engineering expertise to see what would be the proper ways to proceed from discovering those unforeseen conditions. From Contour's observation, the city was given two options, which is shown in your attachments on Page 6. After careful consideration, city staff has agreed to proceed with Option 1, which reflects keeping the exact building location and remediating the existing subgrade area. That said, the change order before you basically reflects remediation services along with the additions of the garage door ramps and the installation of a ventilation fan. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I know that we have in our notes all of that information as to each part of the change, and there actually are three parts to this change order. I believe this adds some 30 days to the construction.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Mr.?
Yes, go ahead, Coach.
Couple things. The discovery of this well is, so this was after they were into the project?
Yes, this was after the contractor demolished the building and did like some grading work on site, and yeah.
So it wasn't something that necessarily should have been discovered beforehand. It was kind of hidden, to sound like.
Yeah, it was hidden. It was hard to know that it was there, because the building and draw, basically walkways and stuff was around, so we couldn't really, weren't able to really locate that there was a well underneath.
And the second question, from what I read in the Agenda Item, the cost to this change order, or this change order amount, does not include whatever's going to be done with that well?
That's correct. So there will be an additional change order once the contractor excavates out that well area where the hole is located. We will have to come before you guys, once we get the more information on how to proceed from Contour, once we get them back on site. That could consist of us filling that hole area back up with 57 stone, and then basically sealing it off with like concrete or something, so... But it's still to be determined once we get Contour, Contour Engineer back on site. I spoke with the contractor, Bert Sanders-Sauders. He mentioned that it shouldn't be that much, that big of a price increase. It should be under $10,000, just to give you guys a general rough estimate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Thompson, just for our own information, this old well site was actually within the confines of the foundation when the other property was torn down?
Yes, sir.
So it was built on top of a well?
Yeah. This was built on a lot.
Got you. Okay. All right. Then we will, are there any reason for us to have further discussion on this? Anyone?
Councilman Adams, I won't say the actual slab of the building was indeed built on top of the well area itself. It was basically had been like the driveway area or like walkways to provide access to that building.
So it will be encapsulated and covered with concrete when all of this is done? We just have to properly fill it before that's done?
That's correct. And then also I want to point out too that, so we will be funding this price increase through the 2016 SPOSS funds as well.
We still have monies from 2016 in the Parks and Rec, a part of the SPOSS?
That is correct.
Okay. Good. If there are no concerns or questions, then I'd like to also place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We have one other. Item C, authorize the mayor to sign Amendment 7 to the city's standard agreement between owner and architect dated June 7, 2019, with Tunnel, Spangler, and Associates for Design Services for the city's Town Green Project for Additional Construction Administrative Services for the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater and Greenspace Project. Mr. Thompson?
So the additional construction administrative services included in the amendment number seven before you this evening is categorized in four different parts. The first part is shown as Task A, and then basically includes on-site visits with field reports and two monthly project meetings. So initially, TSW is on contract to provide those services that I previously mentioned above for 18 months. Due to the project delay, we must extend TSW's contract time for an additional month and a half.
That's basically what this, what this request is for, is just additional time?
Part of, part of the...
Additional time that it will take to complete the project?
Oh, that's correct. Task B is similar. TSW handles all the RFIs and submittal requests from the contractor, so we're just basically increasing their time to help us, assist us out with addressing any requests for informations or submittal.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone? Yes, Coach.
I may have missed this. Some of these things that have been discovered, some of the errors...
Oh, yeah, I was getting to that as well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Task C, that's another part. It's basically TSW adding supplemental guidance, basically from items not installed correctly and/or contract deviations from the contractor. If you guys can recall, some of those items were presented in the most recent construction change orders that Steve Morrow presented, that you guys approved previously at a council meeting. So the items resulted in the, I'm sorry. So with that being said, there were, from those, from that meeting, TSW and Ray Lynn, they both agreed that both parties were at fault, so that's why we have a reduced cost in the change orders and also a reduced cost in the tax amendment as well. It's reduced by 20%, and yeah, so that's what Task C is basically in regards to. Are there any additional questions?
And so each of these, under Task C, these are just examples of things that they have provided guidance to us on as we have gone through the project.
That's correct.
And we're going to continue having them on site until the completion of the project, at least through, with this, with this extension, at least through June 15.
Well, no, it's based on the, the project, the project deviations that were, just those deviations that were discussed during the change order presentation made by Steve Morrow.
And these are examples of things that have been done, that have been corrected and/or have been found out that needed correction?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, Coach?
I guess, I guess I got to ask, and so there, it looks like, from what I'm reading, there have been some mistakes made, but we're still having to pay part of the mistake, what it sounds like? Am I looking at that correctly, or...
Yep, that's correct. And I'm not sure if you would call Steve Morrow kind of explained the situation.
But I didn't have the context of this in front of me, so...
Yeah. So what was agreed upon, basically, Ray Lynn reduced the change order amount by, I want to say, I want to say approximately $100, close to $100,000, if I'm not mistaken. And then TSW went back knowing that they were in fault, you know, in fault on some of the designs that were presented, so they reduced this amendment that you see before you by 20% as well. So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
So basically, we're talking about a building that is being retrofitted, and we were basing, we're basing those estimates and those contracts on plans that were drawn and were submitted and were used in building that structure 40 years ago. And that's what some of this was based upon, so I guess you would say it's somewhat of a round-robin of problems that everyone has worked together to work through. Okay? Questions, comments? Anyone?
And also, moving along, Task D, similar to Task C, TSW also provided some guidance, which was outside of their current scope in regards to, there were some, if you guys can recall, there were some fire comments made...
And that's what some of this was based upon, so uh I guess you would say it's somewhat of a round robin of 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 problems that everyone has worked together to work through. Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone?
And also um moving along, Task D, similar to Task C, um TSW also provided some um guidance, which was outside of their um current scope um in regards to there were some fi- if you guys can recall, there were some fire comments made um post the uh permitting process that some of the um inspectors wanted us to relocate the uh post indicator valves and also the fire department connections. And so um TSW had to go outside of their scope to revise the drawings based on those um items. Um also, staff wanted TSW W to look further into um kiosk systems throughout the um the park as well. So this amendment includes that that those findings, and then the there were um comments made by WSA as well um in regards to the storm line, um relocating the storm line, redesigning the storm line along Church Street. So it's basically just a combination of TSW uh providing guidance outside of their work, their scope of work in relation to those um.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Coming down to the finish line, is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Looking good. I noticed we had our our roof beam set this past week, and things are looking really good coming along.
And I just want to mention too that there will be another uh TSW amendment, number eight, because staff uh wants them to explore the option of um installing a warming kitchen um on the second floor of the event space facility. So they're going back to the drawing boards to see how we could fit a warming kitchen to basically um um efficiently uh manage uh operations when it comes to catering.
Okay.
So just want you guys to have that on your radar as well.
Is there any reason why we could not place Item C on the consent agenda for Monday? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, that's all that I have tonight under Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Our next committee is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, and that is chaired by Councilwoman LaShawn Burdenly.
Thank you, um Mayor Pro Tim, no items tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burdenly.
You're welcome.
Our next committee is Legislative Intergovernmental Intergovernmental Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Sam Davis.
Yes, uh Mayor Pro Tim. Item A, adopt the uh resolution eliminating direct involvement by the City of Douglasville Electric official in planning, logic, and implementing of city's sponsored events. And uh Ms. Miranda, you have any additional anything, or are you coming back later on for the discussion?
Councilman Davis, good evening. This was again discussed at the committee's meeting at five o'clock. I don't have any additional information beyond what was previously discussed, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and uh before you put it all together, I'd we'd like to uh go over it one more time, make sure that uh we still able to submit um a list of artists for uh Wednesday concerts and uh and stay within the budget.
Yes, so on the item attachment on page two where the resolution begins, on item on paragraph number one, um at the bottom, the elected body is not prohibited from making recommendations to the city manager regarding city-sponsored special events. So um that is provided for in the resolution.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Watts, go ahead.
Did uh so what if I understand what you just said, any recommendation to come from us would would not go to the the company, but would go through uh our city manager?
Yes, that's correct. They would they would just be passed along through that through that avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, they'd be passed along to the company, okay? Right? Any other, Councilman Miller?
I think just to clarify, just so I think folks understand, I could I can recommend to staff that we need to bring Billy Joel in here to perform, but it's not a good idea for me to say we should only pay him a million dollars and book him on February second.
Correct, and typically you all are not engaged with vendors and contractors that the city contracts with anyway, so this follows that same protocol. You all make recommendations regarding um operations with any vendors that we have, and that's typically passed through through the city manager's office, so this is following that same guidance.
Okay, anyone else?
So city manager, so the recommendation of Billy Joel, uh has is that a formal recommendation there?
I I've received that, Councilman Watts, and I will pass that along to RCS and and follow up with the cost estimate.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh oh, so you all just submit your names? Um uh Ms. Miranda, you put that on the consent agenda for uh when uh come back on Monday, we'll vote on it. Okay? All right, moving right along, uh Item B, adopting ordinance to amend section two forty-six of the Administration ordinance to revise the meeting date for in any council meeting conflicting with Juneteenth. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening, once again. Our section two point four six of the Code of Ordinances lists various dates throughout the year where there may be conflicts with council meetings, typically if there's a Monday meeting and there's a Monday holiday that takes place. This year happens to be that June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth, is on a Monday, and so staff is recommending a change to that Code of Ordinances to allow for a Monday meeting that interferes with Juneteenth to take place on the following day on Tuesday, which would be June twentieth.
Anyone from the council? That's fine with me. I'd like to put this on the consent consent agenda for Monday, Juneteenth weekend. Okay? All right, moving right along, enact the resolution to adopt a record management policy for the city of Douglasville. Ms. Eckers?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. That's all right. Jessica Withrow, City Manager's Office, six six nine five Church Street. City manager had tasked me to assist the city clerk's office on developing a records management policy program um in regards to records retention. Um Ms. Vicki had informed me that the city had adopted a resolution some years back to follow the Georgia Archives retention schedules, which that is not changing. We're still stick sticking with that. This policy is mainly a tool for succession within the clerk's office. Um it's kind of long, so I'll just touch on the highlights of it. The first thing is is that it is going to develop a records management officer for the city clerk's office. This is a position that Ms. Vicki is hoping to have the next few years, you know, if it's feasible within the budget. But in the time being, Ms. Vicki will be the records management officer as she is the city clerk. Another thing is it's going to develop a records committee developed with all the department heads and the records management officer, just so that all the departments are on the same page in regards to records retention and how we do that. Thirdly, it is going to develop um a records liaison officer from each department to work with the m- records management officer, so that if any questions arise on how long we need to keep something, or if they have specific questions, they can reach out to that liaison officer and the records manager officer to get that sorted out. And lastly, we instead of just saying we follow the Georgia Archives records retention schedules, we have listed all of those in this policy, so anyone in the departments can use that as a reference on how long they need to keep certain records. So that is all I have, and myself and Ms. Vicki would gladly answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mayor Council? If not, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Um our next committee is Personnel and Organization Committee, but chaired by Councilman Chris Watts.
Thank you, uh Mayor Pro Tim. Uh we have one item tonight. Item A, adopt a resolution to authorize the city to utilize in part American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for the purpose of providing retention incentive funds to city employees and creating a one-time annual leave buyback option for city employees. And uh Ms. Austin Bing, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Tia Austin Bing, six six nine five Church Street, Human Resources. This item before you um is two parts as it relates to our strategies to continue to provide retention incentives for our employees. Um as you recall, last year, we implemented um what I would call Phase One of the ARPA retention incentive funds for our uh city employees, full-time and part-time. And this year, we are uh back before you to recommend a second uh disbursement of those funds. We are getting down to the wire as it relates to um what we would like to propose um to use these funds for. And um the first part of this resolution is to provide um dispersments to our full-time, part-time, seasonal staff um with a retention um bonus. Um if you um look on page three of your attachment, we are spelling out what those amounts are. Fifteen hundred for um full-time employees um who've been here at least one year, five hundred for those who have been full-time at least six months but less than one year in a full-time status, and then one hundred dollars for full-time, part-time, seasonal, and temporary staff with less than um six months of employment. If you have, um thi- this is in the budget for these funds, so if you have any questions about this this first part of the resolution, um I'll take questions.
Any questions on that on the first part of the resolution? Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, uh Mister Chairman. Again, uh Ms. Austin Bing, where are these funds coming from now? Coming from ARPA?
Yes, sir.
And so we still have funds available uh in a line item for the purpose of this?
Yes, sir, and we will um should be noted that we will come back before you um one other time uh before fiscal year twenty-five to propose how to um use the rest of those funds for retention incentive. So yes, sir, we do have it budgeted.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Watts and Councilman Adams and the remainder of council, just to give some context before Ms. Austin Bing moves forward, you all passed the resolution last year that included for all three years of the program. We're coming back before you to make adjustments to that. We're we're just going to come back before you each year because our personnel situation changes. Um and the original resolution, we were to provide one thousand dollars for each employee. Um our employment situation as far as um vacancies hasn't really changed that much. We're still above forty vacancies um as staff, so we're able to provide fifteen hundred dollars rather than a thousand. So we'll make a determination next year um as to what we will be able to give, rather than making that determination three years prior. Um the other item um portion of the resolution that Ms. Austin Bing is going to mention to you is a discussion I had with Councilman Watts regarding uh several of our employees, particularly within the police department, that have not been able to exhaust their vacation leave. Um and a lot of that has to do with just the inability of being able to take off vacation. Of course, vacation time is for an employee to manage, um but when you're in a situation where you're short-staff, um IE in public services, those employees are just not able to do that. Um we do have funds available remaining in our bu- in our um bonus line item that we do each year for this current fiscal year that we're in. So I'm recommending that for this one time that we do a vacation buyback program for forty hours. Um it we will, we do have the funds, we have those funds remaining. If not, those funds would just go into the fund balance uh to be able to cover that. Um I did consider and look, uh Councilman Watts, at us being able to take that time and apply it to um time for individual to add on for their retirement, but that would require us to um change our entire master plan for retirement. So currently, right now, employees are able to cash in time once they retire. Um if we were to allow them to use their time in lieu of years of service, we would have to completely change. We can't have both. So um this is a one-time um option. Uh you know, just so you know, there there are employees that potentially will lose um four to five weeks of vacation, so this is not somebody losing twenty hours or thirty hours. These are employees who are losing weeks of um vacation, and a lot of it, I do believe, is due to just the inability to take the time off because we're short-staff. Um I'm hopeful that um in twenty twenty-four, our employment situation looks very different and changes. We do um see that there are changes uh within the job market, uh but what what I will be challenging all of the departments with um in the short distant future is we're going to have to take a look at how we provide services. Um there are some departments, I'll pick on Greg's, for example, turnover rate um just last year is forty-six percent. Um the reality that we're going to be able to retain in certain departments is is not is not realistic. So we're going to have to really take a hard look at how we provide services in some of those departments. Some of it may result result in an increase in overtime. Um some of it may be um how we provide those services. A good example is recycling. We know we cannot continue to provide recycling the way that we have long-term, and it's just due to the availability of drivers um and staff workers. So that's going to be our task over the next uh three to six months. I I'd hope to be able to tell you that the employment situation looks very different, but I feel confident to be able to say we're going to run thirty to forty employees short, probably for some time to come. Um and that result uh that is going to result in us having to take a look at how we provide services in certain areas and what we do with those. A bonus can only do so much, um but I I am thankful and appreciative of the employees who have been able to sacrifice, but it is not a long-term solution.
Thank you. Thank you, uh city manager. Anybody have any questions or response to what you just heard? We good? All right, Ms. Austin Bing.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I was just going to say to add to what Ms. Hampton said about the this being a one-time um buyback option for those employees who um would have been at or above four hundred hours of annual leave anytime between January first and December thirty-first of this year. They would be able to sell back up to forty hours of annual leave. It um it will require the employee to provide uh human resources with um assigned acknowledgement form at least thirty days prior to any payroll, um so that we have efficient time sufficient time to be able to process those requests. We do expect approximately twenty-five employees to, if you if uh if it is your pleasure to be first in line, so to speak, um for that buyback. But again, at any time throughout twenty twenty-three, if an employee reaches four hundred or more hours, they would be able to sell back up to forty hours.
And the uh it's a one-time deal?
Yes, sir.
And um there I had another question that just jumped out of my head. Anybody got any uh questions? For uh Ms. Austin Bing? I just, first of all, I I like, I mean, we we have, we do have dedicated employees and and things have been tight, and folks have just been coming to work and not using their vacation time. I'm not a big fan of of losing that. Uh of course, I come from the school system, and uh it's a little bit different there, but uh I I I like the creative ways that we're figuring out how to alleviate that issue. Uh any anybody else? Want to place this on the consent agenda for Monday, if that's all right? Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. That's all I had. Uh Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Uh we move on to the Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilman Mark Adams.
Thank you, Mister Mayor Pro Tim. We have one item tonight under Planning and Development, as to refer to the Planning Commission a proposed ordinance to amend Article Four of the Unified Development Ordinance to add four point one zero and amend subsection two point oh two C for a town center mixed-use zoning classification. Ms. Marissa Jackson is going to help us with that. Good evening, ma'am.
Uh good evening. Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, six seven zero one Church Street. So the item we have before you today is proposing a new zoning district that will be added to the Unified Development Ordinance. It's for a mixed-use um zoning district that will be specifically for the downtown area. The current mixed-use ordinance um in the UDO has a minimum of ten acres, and of course, downtown, there isn't a lot of available land, most of the land is parceled out, so ten acres isn't really feasible. Um the minimum we have right now is six acres. We also talked about maybe reducing that further to maybe two or three acres, again due to the limited amount of undeveloped land downtown available for redevelopment or infill development. Um the gist of the Town Center Miss Mixed Use Ordinance is that the zoning, the rezonings are going to be based on a development plan. So the development plan is going to have is going to be required to have an existing conditions analysis, an architectural pattern book that um outlines facade materials, building materials, finistration. Um it's going to have be required to have a site plan, and it's going to show, you know, where the parking is, what the different types of buildings are, ingress egress, where everything goes. Um for a project that might take a little bit longer, they're going to be required to have a phasing plan. Um and then there's also a requirement for it to be near uh a public facility or to like pre-create or provide um open space um as an amenity. Um basically, this is for there's a map included in your packet, but it's included for commercial parcels downtown. Generally speaking, it's around Church Street, um along the the frontage, along Strickland, Veterans Memorial. Generally speaking, it's around Church Street, along the, the frontage, along Strickland, Veterans Memorial. The Old Mill Site is included, and then there's some industrial sites north of Strickland that are undeveloped that it will include. Staff is of the opinion that the Town Center Mixed Use Zoning District will allow creative infill development and redevelopment downtown. That respects the existing character of downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Questions, comments, input? Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Appreciate the presentation. Couple of questions. Why, why are we settling on a six-acre minimum for downtown? I mean, when you look at the downtown, I mean, it's primarily comprised of very small lots. And it would take, you'd have to assemble quite a number of lots just to get up to six acres. I mean, why don't we, why have any, any minimum size for them? And I mean, you could take a half-acre lot and put a mixed-use structure on it by just going up.
I can answer that for you because she may not be aware. When I originally, when we originally discussed this, I had a conversation with Councilman Adams, and six was just the number that we came up with. If you all want to go smaller, we can, but we felt like that was a more conservative number. But we're open to whatever you suggest. Marissa, you may have other comments that you wanted to make, but it was based on that, especially considering where we were.
I mean, technically, somebody built, you know, you, you could have a two-story building with a coffee shop below and an apartment above, you know, or residence above. That would be considered a mixed use.
At your discretion.
And it would sit on, you know, less than a quarter acre. I mean, would that, would we be running into any problems by, by creating a six-acre minimum?
Is that your discretion?
Well, well, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, I mean, I'm asking the question.
Well, right now, in the zoning ordinance, there's the CBD zoning district, and it allows you to have that model that kind of has, like, the coffee shop downstairs and then, like, an apartment or two or three upstairs. This, I think that this particular development was meant to be a little bit more about, like, a design or create some placemaking. And the type of placemaking that it's intending might be difficult for just one parcel. Chelsea and I attended the Georgia Planning Association Conference last week or the week before, and we went on a field trip and saw a really creative project that was like a mixed-use residential project. That was a one-acre lot, and it was really well-designed. And I think that speaks more to what we're trying to create here. So I would say the least I would recommend is maybe one acre or minimum, super minimum, half acre, but not just one parcel.
Okay, so what you're saying is as long as you're in the CBD, you, you know, a singular building can be mixed and it doesn't really, it's not affected by this ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So, but I would agree that, you know, I mean, you can do a lot on one acre in, in the downtown. I mean, you could, I, I understand the type of project you're describing and that, that you still could get, you could do something with one acre. So I, I would recommend if this council is willing to consider dropping that minimum bit.
I would have no problem with that personally. I know that we're going to have a, a very large challenge in trying to find a piece of property that's not already developed, even six acres, even by raising, lowering it to six acres. It would seem to me that this new requirement would, would cause a developer to have to do a lot more pre-planning and bring a lot more to the table in his first visit when he comes to zoning, to where he would have to already know how much parking, what kind of, what kind of negotiations do I have to do on that to get that approved as a part of the zoning, and then know a lot more about how the development was going to appear as far as materials to be used going in day one, as far as a part of rezoning, so that you would cut out maybe some steps that would have to be done by the city. I don't have a problem with reducing it. I'll be quite frank with you, I don't know how long ago we began talking about this when we even talked about going down to six acres, but it's been a while. And the ten acres would, would really now, with what we have left in our community within this area that we are specifying, I don't know where there's a piece that would meet the requirement of either a six or a ten acre. So I have no problem with it being smaller. That would be up to the, to this council. Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last question, which was, under the materials that are strictly prohibited, I would, I would, you list stucco as one.
Where are you, Mr. Mayor Protim?
I'm sorry, item number four on page nine.
Okay.
Okay, nine R, R, System Five on, on the numbering system. Stucco, I, I'm wondering if you do mean stucco versus exterior insulation and finishing systems, which is a, which is synthetic stucco. I mean, there's definitely, there's definitely difference in quality and character of those. I mean, you can do some really beautiful work in stucco. Ephes, as we call it, looks like Ephes. So that may, you may want to revisit that and kind of take a, a second look at that. Also, just want to clarify to aluminum siding and steel siding. And, and we may want to have, if we don't already have them in the UDO, actual definitions of those words. Especially aluminum siding is just a little bit broad because you could use alpolic panels and call that aluminum siding. It's an, it's an, it's an aluminum sandwich panel that comes in a lot of different, very nice finishes, usually powder, powder-coated finishes that have, that are, you know, very high-end looking or can be high-end looking, I should say. So you may want to clarify the definition. I, I understand what was meant by aluminum siding, but we probably want to clarify that. And then steel siding, I'm not sure what's meant by that. If that may means typical sandwich panels that you see on a pre-engineered building, that's fine. But you can have what, what you could look at as steel siding on a steel, steel fenestration that is actually, you could be looking at elements of the structure and still think of it as steel siding. So we may want to clarify the definition for that as well. So those two items just sort of jumped out at me, but I don't, I don't have any problem with any of the others on there.
Just as an example, Mr. Mayor Protim, I believe we were asked to make some, some adjustments or do some substitutions when the Chick-fil-A on Fairburn Road was being rebuilt because they were actually using some of those aluminum panels that you were speaking of as a part of their facade. And that's, and it looks fine. It looks fine. I, I would agree. There are some things that would, that I, I do think we, we would need to definitely prohibit, but I don't know that that should include aluminum or steel siding. If so, then I'd like to know why we would, why we would prohibit that? What would, what would cause us to come to that decision?
Those are prohibited in the UDO already. And it was called out specifically in this one because it's not really in the character of downtown. We want it to have enough openness where the applicant, you know, can come to us with something interesting. But we also want it to give them enough guidance where they would be inspired to create things that would fit the character. We can definitely look at those to add definitions of what they are and maybe revisit allowing some of those building materials.
I think that'd be a great idea. Yes. Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you very much. Yep, for whatever it's worth, I'm representing the Downtown Ward along with Councilman Adams. I am completely on board with this. I understand that we don't have very much land left in the downtown area to be developed. And with, given the guidance that we're looking at right here, I don't see where it would be a problem to reduce that acreage. Absolutely. Thanks.
Others? Okay, then we will need some guidance as far as our council is concerned to give staff as to where we want to set that minimum then. And maybe in, is this something that we need to accomplish? Ms. Jackson, in order to make our own town green be within requirement? So we need to make some, some changes pretty quickly because when we make this, when we set these minimums, then we have to make sure that what we're doing also abides in that, within that. So what is, is there a staff, is there a staff recommendation that we need to have a decision quickly on this? Just how soon? Where are we?
We, they're waiting on us. So I would recommend that if you all are comfortable going to one acre with a max of ten acres, adding in those materials just in this district that you would like, we can make those adjustments for Monday, so it can be referred to the Planning Commission because they are waiting on us.
Any reason why we would not do that in this specific area within the downtown district? Okay. I think we're good with that. If you can make those changes and bring it to us on Monday, then we will take that up for a vote.
Do you have a point of information?
Yes, ma'am.
So can you confirm that we're going to one acre?
Yes.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
One acre, ma'am.
And is that something you, Ms. Jackson, I think we're, we're probably leaning heavily on you as the staff member along with our Assistant City Manager as to how you liked or disliked. I think you were very much in favor of the one acre development.
I'm comfortable with one acre if everyone else is.
Okay. Sounds good. That's what we'll do then. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. We'll take this up on Monday. And Mr. Mayor Protim, we have nothing else under Planning and Development tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Our next committee is the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Our next committee is Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilwoman Howard Estes.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Estes. Our next committee is Public Safety, and that is chaired by Councilman Sam Davis.
Yes, Mayor Protim, I have a couple of items. Item A, consider approval of an application for an Open Container Day permit on Wednesday, June seventh, fourteen, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, July fifth, twelfth, nineteen, twenty-sixth, from six P.M. to ten P.M. on O'Neal Plaza for the Wednesday Wind Down events concert. Mr. Post, please.
Good evening, Council. Jason Post, Community Relations Director, six, six, nine, five, Church Street. So this is a request to enact the Open Containers' Day Entertainment District for our Wednesday Wind Down Concert Series throughout the summer. We have eight dates scheduled for each Wednesday in the months of June and July on O'Neal Plaza. So the concerts, the acts will be on the stage seven to nine-thirty. We're trying to enact the open containers from six to ten to cover the entire event. It'll operate the same way all of our open container days do. We'll have officers for that event on site. Wristbands will be passed out the day prior to the event to the downtown restaurants wishing to participate. They will be rotating colors each week at random. And I'd be happy to answer any particular questions about the event or the open container request.
So would the, let's say, colors, will they have armbands or, will it be armbands?
Yes, sir, it's armbands, and it's a different color each event. So it's, it's a random color each event, so people can't predict what the color is going to be for the next event, basically.
Okay. Councilman Watts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they can participate, open container with the area restaurants and establishments. Nobody's supposed to bring their own.
Correct. This is, the Entertainment District only allows for them to purchase from the participating restaurants in the area. The restaurants will distribute the wristband at purchase, allowing them to leave the facility with that and wander around the Entertainment District. But no, there is no bring-your-own. It's all based on purchasing from our downtown businesses.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I believe last year it worked real well. The restaurants were happy.
Yes, sir. It was very successful.
Audio was so happy that they was being served.
Yes, sir. Our, our downtown restaurants benefited very, very much from this concert series last year in the Entertainment District. It was-
So if I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for money, if no other. Okay. Thank you. Moving right along. Item B, consider approval of an application for an open, open container day permit on Friday, May twelfth, from six-thirty P.M. to nine P.M. on O'Neal Plaza for a summer blockbuster movie and karaoke night event. Mr. Post?
Jason Post, Community Relations Director, six, six, nine, five, Church Street. Same exact request, same exact process and procedures as the previous request. This one is for our karaoke night out on the plaza. So we had a karaoke as part of our Stranger Things event back in the fall, and it went over really, really well. So we thought, hey, let's have some dedicated karaoke nights out on the plaza. So we're going to do a few of those this year. This one is specifically going to be blockbuster movie music theme, so come out and sing your favorite songs from your favorite blockbuster movies. So it'd be a nice night out on the plaza with music, and we're just wanting to enact the Entertainment District for this event as well.
So the, the restaurants will follow the same procedures and you, and you will have officers on duty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the, Mayor Council? Okay. All right, if a council player, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Councilwoman? Okay, that's all I have. Mayor Protim, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Our next committee is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, that is chaired by Councilman Chris Watts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Our next committee is Technology, that's chaired tonight by the co-chair, Vice Chair, Howard Estes.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Technology Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. The last committee tonight is the Transportation Committee, that is chaired by Councilman LaShawn Burdandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. One item tonight under Transportation, authorize the mayor to sign Supplemental Agreement Number Two with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Project ID zero, zero, one, seven, eight, one, one, State Route ninety-two, and CS five thirty-two from Brown Street to Macarley Street, AKA Dallas Highway Improvement LCI Project. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, sixty-seven, zero, one, Church Street. Good evening again. Mayor Protim Miller in council. So the Dallas Highway Improvements Project recently received additional funding during the last A R C Transportation Improvement Program Amendment, also known as the TIP. The additional funding will assist with the costs associated with the last change order provided by Crow Engineering for the provision of right-of-way slash utility cost estimates and additional historical research surveys that was approved on November seventh of last year, if you can recall. Because of the increase in funding from the A R C, a supplemental agreement is required by GDOT. Basically, the agreement is implemented to basically just change and track the monetary value initially awarded within the project framework agreement between the city and GDOT. Pretty straightforward item.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So this is just finalizing what we have already voted on before.
Yes.
Okay, or do we have any questions, Mayor Protim, or any of our council members? Thank you. I'd like to put this on the consent agenda. And no other items tonight. Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Councilwoman Burdandy. We now come to an opportunity for any other business that would be like to be brought forward to the City Council by any other member of the council? Yes, Councilman?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know, I may be preempting City Manager, but I just wanted to point out that our Parks and Rec, our National Gold Medal finalist for a gold medal award, I should have said it during Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, and I hope I didn't step on, but I just wanted to tell them how proud we are of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Did you have some, something on that in a moment? I can all defer down.
Just to make certain that when you talked to Mr. Bass, you know, just suggested he bring his ego down just slightly a little bit. He has acknowledged that if he wins the crown, none of us will be able to touch him.
Can he still get his head through the office door?
Oh, he already advised Greg to build, widen the door for him. He's already acknowledged that he will need a much larger door for his head.
We would expect no less.
Mr. Bass is on a roll, that's for sure. Is there any other business to come before City Council at this time? We will now move on to staff reports, and we have two staff report items. Those both fall into the Public Safety Committee. So Councilman Davis, I will let you start with the first, first one and go with the second.
Okay, let's start with item A in the staff report concerning a resolution to update the City of Douglasville Entertainment District map. Which one, Ms. Miranda or Ms. Hampton?
I'll start off first and just for both of them. Just to, to point out, we didn't think we would have enough time to put these on committee reports this afternoon for discussion, so we did add them on to the staff report. I know some of you were expecting to see this on the legislative meeting, but I've also had a request from some of you to hold off before we vote on these. So once Ms. Jordan goes over both item A and B, if you all are prepared to vote, we can advise the clerk, and she can put that on for Monday's, Monday night's meeting. So following discussion, we will be just looking for guidance and direction on where you want to move forward. We've discussed these several times, several different options, but I know the last time we did discuss it, you all said that you wanted to have further time to deliberate and to think on it. So these are two items that staff is- So these are two items that staff is at the final draft and ready to hear your direction on where you want to go. And that's all I have, Mr. Davis. If Ms. Jordan may have more.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. The Entertainment District currently for item A, it stops as of the Courthouse Square West and extends to Campbellton Street. So that includes a lot of our local businesses that are on Veterans Memorial Highway and on Church Street in addition to O'Neill Plaza. And the Entertainment District is relevant to discussion that Mr. Post just presented regarding our open container days. That area on a map is where a citizen can have an open container during a special event, Open Container Day. And because of the new development of the Town Green Amphitheater, the recommendation has come to include that space on our Entertainment District map so that it can be included in special event, open container days.
So in other words, you're breaking it down from all the way it stops at the end of Hudson Barbecue?
That's correct. And currently Hudson's barbecue does not serve alcohol, but due to location relative to the Town Green Amphitheater, everything except for the Fire Department Building from Campbellton Street to Rose Avenue would be included, except for, of course, that Fire Department Building. And then it would extend down. And the map is actually located on the agenda item as well on page four for reference, but it extends down through the Town Green Amphitheater property as well. And that's, that's the only, that extension past Courthouse Square West is the only change to that Entertainment District.
Okay. Mayor Council. Okay. All right, let's, and Ms. Miranda and I'll get with you, Council. Miss, the lady from Four Seasons that's right there on the corner, she had mentioned to me that she wants to start doing things in the alleyway, so they'd be walking up the alleyway, going to the plaza. So I'll talk to you about it. For your occasion, at alleyway. So I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to item B.
Are you, Mr. Chair, are you recommending that we do, put that to a vote on Monday then?
Yes, and then let Ms. Miranda look at the, for your occasion, the alleyway.
Well, for your occasion is on the other side of Campbellton Street, so that's not, it's not included in this.
Okay. All right, item B, staff report concerning exemption certain establishment from pouring requirements within the city of Douglasville. Ms. Hampton?
Ms. Jordan. So again, this item came before council a few months ago at a committee's meeting. This was one of a few different alcohol ordinance amendment items that was discussed. And this particular item is having to do with the exemptions to distance requirements from schools and churches. The amendment is not proposing any changes to the distance requirements themselves, and that is 300 feet from a church building, 600 feet from a school ground. What this amendment is doing is asking for council to consider exempting taprooms, tasting rooms, and brew pubs and other licensed pouring locations within the city of Douglasville Central Business District from distance requirements. Currently, the ordinance does already exempt restaurants from those, in the Central Business District, from those distance requirements. And this amendment, again, is just asking for tasting rooms, taprooms, and brew pubs to be added to that list of exempted businesses from the distance requirements in the Central Business District.
And one reason, because of the Town Green, probably right there, probably going to draw different businesses, so. Any question from the mayor or Council Watts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, just a reminder to everybody that, that restaurants are exempt, but that's because they, they are supposed to serve 51%. Their, their total sales is supposed to be 51% food, correct? Okay, so, I mean, that's one of the reasons why they're exempt. There would no be, there would not be a restriction on some of the things listed here. I'm stating the obvious, but that, that's correct also, isn't it? That there would not be any food requirements for any of these type establishments that are listed.
So that, that is actually a good question. Council, our staff has been requested to present in the coming months, a new classification for the taproom and tasting room that would be added as a use to the UDO. So the requirements surrounding a tasting room and taproom have not yet been established and that would be at the discretion and pleasure of council.
Miss, a couple of other things. I, and I've, you know, I've stated my position on this before. I'm reluctant to do away with barriers that have been established. I, I realize that kids that go to these schools aren't going to be going across the street to the, to any brew pub and loading up. I understand that. I just, I know that we've established barriers, other municipalities have them, others don't. And the only reason I'm reluctant is because the idea that sooner or later the line gets moved again. But, you know, if during these discussions, there's, since it's not set in stone yet as to maybe food requirements and things like that, plus I wasn't 100% sure looking at this. It looked like, when I see taprooms or tasting rooms, I'm thinking of the brew pubs that you see in a lot of small cities that are very popular. We're not talking about liquor, are we, at any of these types of establishments, or is that on the table also?
That would be up to, again, the discretion and pleasure of council in making those recommendations surrounding the requirements for taproom or tasting room. I believe traditionally what you're thinking of is, is a beer and wine type establishment.
Well, I know we've, and this is the last thing I'll say and then I'll go back to Mr. Chairman, but I just, I would be, I would be interested in more discussion, not a vote on Monday. That would just be my, my recommendation on some of this and clarification. But, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Councilman now.
Chairman, my, my question would be, we're mentioning restaurants which are already exempt. Tasting rooms, taprooms, brew pubs, hotel lounges, private clubs. We don't have any private clubs within the city now, do we?
To my understanding, no. The, the language of hotels, hotel lounges and private clubs and other licensed locations within the Central Business District of the city of Douglasville, that language is already in the ordinance. If it were at, you know, council's desire, we could look at removing any, any reference to a private club. But that's just already language that's there.
Well, the reason for my concern, of course, is when it says and other licensed locations, because then you are exempting something that you have had no experience with in a private club, but you're exempting them before they come in. Does that make sense? Are we not exempting them from, from the, we're not exempting them from having, from having the food requirements, or we are?
No, we're just, we're just restricting them, or we're just exempting them from any distance requirements in, in the Central Business District.
Okay, so if a private club comes in and wants to be located, there would be no exemption from those distance, there would be an exemption that they don't have to abide by those distance requirements.
Well, I would, I'll give you an example. I don't know if the Masonic Lodge has alcohol, but it is considered a private club. So if, if there were an organization like that that were to come in and they are located in proximity to Airway Christian School, then that, that would, that would cover that. I don't, I don't think that they are, but just as an example.
I don't think so either. Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Councilman Burdandy?
Yes. So the location within the Central Business District, are we speaking about particularly downtown? When you say the Central Business District?
That, that area is defined on a map. It's, it's a little bit larger space, my understanding, than the Entertainment District. I think it extends a little bit further down, down Church Street, down Veterans Memorial. But that is a defined district by the city of Douglasville. So what that's, what that's talking about, the other licensed locations, that's talking about Gabe's, Gumbo's, Lou Rose, and, and those other restaurants that are, that are located right in, in the, in the greater downtown area, yes.
We can, and we can get you a map of the Central Business District, Ms. Stanley.
So can we get, can we get a map uploaded before Monday?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Would that, I'm sorry, would that map include where the, the schools and the churches are located within that district?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I was going to add, Mr. Chairman, was in reference to Councilman Watts's question about the ordinance for items such as tasting rooms and taprooms. So we're bringing these before you to see where you want to go. If you're comfortable with voting on these on Monday, we will come back before with that additional classification on the next round of meetings in May, if you're comfortable with that. But if you need more time to discuss, Ms. Jordan can hold on to that. But we wanted to tackle these before we go to the next item.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Couple of comments. First of all, I did want to, my very, very minor point of order on the, the ordinance that's written under section A subsection 1 on 10-18 grounds for denial of license where it says hotel lounges, private clubs, I think you're missing a comma in there.
We caught that this afternoon, but because of the power outage, we were not able to upload the corrected, but thank you.
It cost me my lunch today then, unless it cost you a comma. Okay, good. So I'm glad you saw that. To, to Councilman Watts's point, I tremendously respect his, his position on that and where he's coming from. I would, I would respond that the way to think of it may be not so much as, as you're expanding the boundary on this as, as you are really acknowledging a new reality or new, new, new existence, a new, new, new technology, new entities, because that's, that's what this is really trying to cover. It's not, it's not so much expanding into, if you think of it 20 years ago, there were no brew pubs around, I mean, very, very few, you see, but now you're seeing them everywhere. So we're just simply acknowledging that these are, this is a new, relatively new form of business and that we have to, we have to deal with it one way or the other. So, you know, with respect to however you feel about it, that's certainly fine. We just simply have to acknowledge and bring it into our, our system of ordinances and say, how do we feel about it? Do we want to exempt it to, to this various, these various rules or whatnot? So it's not like we're, we're growing the ordinance or like that. I think that's, maybe that's a better way of thinking about it. If you, but if also, if you look at it from, I think I made this point before, from an economic generator standpoint, I mean, the, the, it is really phenomenal what's happening in a lot of towns our size or even smaller that are welcoming brew pubs and taprooms and they're just, those communities are benefiting tremendously from the economics. It's, it's, it's bringing in the younger demographic into your community that with a large amount of disposable income. And they're disposing it in those communities and we want them to dispose it in our community. So that's, I think that's one way of thinking about it, with, with respect to how you feel about that. I appreciate that.
And I just, real quick, I just want everybody to know for the record, I'm not opposed to a brew pub or something like that opening up. And I just, I guess I struggle with the idea of, of removing barriers that are in place and maybe for antiquated reasons, I don't know. But I don't like keep moving the line.
Well, like I said, yeah, and I, I totally respect that. I, I'd like to think of it as not so much moving the lines, as bringing something else that's bringing it inside the line.
We also don't want to restrict the options available to the development around the Town Green. And this could potentially do that if we don't change this. To add, you know, we might not be able to have one of those off of the Town Green and I think that would be a, a loss for us.
Anyone else? Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm glad that we're talking about this this evening. I feel like we're at a real pivotal point in our community right now. And we've got a lot of really cool projects going on and also on the tail end of a discussion that we just had about the lack of land to be developed in our downtown area. I think it's really important that we go ahead and look at this now before we run the risk of losing a really cool business opportunity in our downtown area. So whatever people's comfortability levels are, I think that it's really good that we go ahead and discuss that now and have an idea of what we can put and where we can put it before it's too late. And also just a little food for thought for my two cents on the, the food to alcohol ratio is, a lot of times I think these specialty businesses come in and they specialize in, you know, the, the wine or the beer that they're making and I think it's really important to have that food concept. So maybe even if it's a neighboring restaurant, but I would hate to see a business fail because they're too focused on selling enough food to make their numbers and keep their business going.
And I'm not suggesting that necessarily that has to be 51% where we are with restaurants. That's why I encourage more discussion. Unless we've got two or three brew pubs waiting in line to start developing tomorrow, I, I just wonder when we have to do this. I'm not, I'm not, that's just one voice. I just would like to clarify a few things and talk about a little bit more.
I, I actually had a conversation with somebody on, on this chamber visit to Durham who, who approached me and asked me if we were interested in having a brew pub downtown. And they are supposed to be contacting me. So, I mean, it is happening and, and I think we need to be ahead of it so that we don't have to rearrange everything once somebody comes expressing the interest. If we show that we are open to it, they're more likely to, to start the process.
Anyone else?
What, what is a healthy timeline for us to be looking at this?
We need to start the process now because we're, we're loose in the next city of Powder Springs or breweries and brew pubs. So we need to start our processing now. I was at the conference up in Durham and I spoke with some gentlemen and they really want to come south, west, south.
As, as it relates to the Town Green, of course, you know, we're not under construction, so we're not pending anything, but everything that you all approve and do that seems advantageous for them for business would be helpful, i.e. you just move forward on referring the zoning to the planning commission. So anything, you know, in that frame, I'm certain would be helpful. As it relates to other establishments that we're not aware of, you know, oftentimes if you don't have things in place for certain businesses to come to you, you won't know who, who you potentially may lose.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to my colleagues for all of your comments. I specifically ask for the Central Business District map because it is a struggle for me, just in all honesty. I have no problem with taprooms. What I do have a problem with is I live in a ward now where there are, we're in a food desert. There's not a grocery store, there's not a coffee shop, and I can go on and on. So I have to be very, very specific in detail so that I can explain to those in, in my ward and that live, work, and play in Douglasville, just like all of us, what's coming. That's, that's, that's my comment. Period. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, that's all I have.
Do we want to vote on, I know we talked about item A, putting it on for Monday. Are we comfortable with item B, putting it on for Monday for a vote?
I'd say yes. Let's put it on for a vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Win or lose?
All right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We now move to updates from city staff. City Attorney, Mr. Dobson. Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Our Staff Attorney, Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have no business this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Our Assistant Chief of Police, Mr. Davidson.
No business, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, March Hampton.
Glad to be back.
Glad to have you.
Literally. One thing to mention, Ms. Callen wanted me to make a point of clarification on the remaining loan balance for the DFAX building. She said she was looking at a previous document, but your loan balance is actually 1.5 million for that building. So we're closer than what she mentioned.
We just gained a million dollars in one evening.
We would like to say we gained a million.
Anything we did.
But that's, that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Now is the time of the evening when we come to welcoming citizens' comments, or comments from citizens and delegates. I'm not sure who delegates are, but I know we have some citizens here, so if they would like to make some comments, they're welcome to come down now and state your name, address for the record, and, and your interest for the evening.
This is going to be very short. I'm Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way. And several meetings ago, I came in here to talk about striping that needed to be done on Timber Ridge. You could not tell where the lanes were to turn and anything like that. Well, yesterday morning, before nine o'clock, they were almost completely striped. And we want to thank the city for doing that. I was going to Begelmeister, and you can't imagine the number of people in there talking about being able to see where the lanes were to turn. So thank you very much.
Well, we'd like to thank you too, Ms. Welch, for bringing these, many of these things to our attention. The squeaky wheel, it works most of the time. Any other citizens or delegates that would like to come, come down and speak? Now is your opportunity. Mr. Mayor Protem Emeritus, if you have anything you'd like. Okay. All right. Well, hearing none, then thank you very, everybody for attending. This meeting is now officially adjourned.